I now call this meeting to order of the Hostess Missionary District. Public comments?
Uh, we'll call first Mr. President.
Oh, yes.
Director Michael Schaefer.
Here.
Director Arthur Perry.
Here.
Secretary Arlene Schaefer.
Here.
Vice President Robert Oo.
Here.
President James Harris.
President. Announcement of late communications. Do we have it anywhere?
Yes, Mr. President, late communications. I did make copies of that email attachment, but I'll be sharing that in our presentation.
Public comments? Anybody in the public here likely to address the board? Not long. Public hearing. This is one I should use the hearing. Consider terminating the variance in ordering food service establishment Denny's located at 3170 Harbor Boulevard to install and maintain grease interceptor. That's the issue. Good morning, everyone. This is a hearing of the Board of Directors of the Hostess Missionary District to consider whether Denny's should be ordered to retrofit its sewer system to include a grease interceptor if certain facts are established. First, I would like to identify the persons involved in the hearing. Alan Burns, our district counsel, will be advising the board on procedural and substantive due process issues as well as any evidentiary disputes that may arise. The parties who present present the staff's case for representing, Scott, our general manager, will be representing our interest. And Medhat, forgive me on the pronunciation, B-E-C-H-A-Y. I now have our council advise the parties on the issue and procedure for the hearing. Mr. Burns.
Thank you, Mr. President. The issue in the hearing is whether Denny's has contributed to a sewer blockage, sewer system overflow, or any system interference resulting from the discharge of wastewater or waste containing fats, oils, or grease, and whether Denny's should be ordered to install and maintain a grease interceptor to prevent future health hazards created by sewer line failures and blockages, sewer system overflows, or other sewer system interferences. An order to retrofit shall not be made unless the property owner has been given due process and an opportunity to address the board regarding the proposed action. That is the purpose of this hearing. Denny's has been given notice and they have appeared. An order to retrofit will not be made unless the board makes a finding that the action was necessary to protect public health, safety, and welfare, which are threatened by future sewer spills that are otherwise likely. The hearing, this is a, on the procedure, this will be an informal hearing. The rules of evidence will not be strictly followed, although certain evidence will be given greater weight than others, and although hearsay alone is allowed, it will not alone support an order to retrofit. I understand there will be live testimony today. The hearing will provide staff an opportunity to prove its case for retrofitting. Staff has the burden of proof on the issue, so it will go first. It must establish by a preponderance of the evidence that retrofitting is necessary to protect public health, safety, and welfare, which are threatened by future sewer spills that are otherwise likely. Staff will present its packet for retrofitting that has previously been shared with Denny's weeks ahead of this hearing. That packet is in your possession, and it's made part of the administrative record, as will relevant provisions of the district's operations code, and specifically Chapter 6.07 of that code. The packet that you've been given has Exhibits 1 through 10, so we will keep that exhibit system in place, and those will constitute the first 10 exhibits. Also part of the record will be relevant provisions of Health and Safety Code and the Operations Code. Staff may present live witnesses that support its case. At the conclusion of staff's case, Denny's will be allowed to present documentary evidence and testimony that supports its case. Each side may be granted a limited right to cross-examine witnesses if it's necessary to provide a fair hearing. We have the boardroom, at least for the morning, so does each side have a time estimate of how long it will take to put its case on, starting with staff?
Fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Medhat?
Medhat.
Medhat, I'm sorry.
Yes, about 10:50 minute.
10:50 minutes, thank you.
You guys presented the documentation with photos, with some made of photos.
Thank you. And are you the owner of Denny's?
I am the one of the owner, yes, sir.
One of the owners?
And I also have a Mr. Dennis who's underground plumbing.
That's your contractor?
Working with him.
Okay. Thank you. Could I have the name again for the record?
Medhat Bechay, B-E-C-H-A-Y.
Oh, card, that's great. And your contractor, could we get his name ahead of?
Dennis Ruiz, R-U-I-Z.
Dennis Ruiz?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
And Dennis was recommended by the sanitation to utilize for...
Chris, you want to make that part of your presentation?
Yes, sir.
Mr. President?
Thank you. Let's begin the hearing. Due to the party's desire to make an opening statement...
Yes, Mr. President, we'll then start.
Okay, staff will proceed first.
Mr. President, Board Directors. So as you know, the restaurant we're talking about today is Denny's Restaurant, which is located right here at 3170 Harbor Boulevard, which is just south of Geesler. So what we'll prove today is that this restaurant has had a history of sanitary sewer overflows, being back in 1997. Most of those spills were not caused by grease. They were caused by infrastructure failure, which you'll look at there today that the owner have done those repairs, which is good. But we're still experiencing some sewer spills that we believe are caused by grease. As you know, SSOs are threatens the public's health, safety, and welfare, and we do believe future SSOs will occur at this establishment. Our recommendations will be board approval to terminate Denny's variance and order Denny's to install and maintain a grease interceptor. So we're sort of like, kind of go back to the history, and we're calling it attachment, but as Council, Council of Burns said, it's Exhibit, we'll call it Attachment 1, Exhibit 1. And your document is a letter dated October 16th, 1997, and in that letter, it states that there were at least four SSOs from February to October, 1997. In that letter, which is a copy of that in your attachment, you'll see on the third bullet point, even back in 1997, staff recommended to the owner to install a grease interceptor. The owner at the time was CJ Seagerstone's. They owned the property at that time, and they requested immediate repairs of the sewer laterals. This again is in your attachment. This is a copy of that letter, and here's where it says we wanted immediate repairs of the lateral. The owner responded and said it was because of poor design of the lateral, and he's taken necessary steps to prevent future SSOs. So this is a letter dated November 14th, 1997. Here's where it says it's failure, poor designs, and then the action they took, they met with Rob Hemers, they called in a sewer contractor to make repairs, they contacted the district to follow up later. They also met and discussed problems with the owner, C.D. Seagerstone's, and then they met with staff for repairs. That was about 1997. So a few years later, in 2001, we had another sewer spill on February 13th. At that time, there was a new owner that purchased the property from Seagerstone's, and the new owner did not, was not aware of the previous SSOs. Staff met with the manager, the owner to recommend suggested repairs. This is a copy of that staff report from back to 2001, getting this attachment one that explains that staff didn't meet with the owner and manager to talk about improvements. So as you know, in 2006, the California Water Quality Control Board adopted the Wasting Charge requirements. Those requirements require local authorities to adopt a fats, oil, and grease control program. As a result of those new regulations, the district did adopt a fog program manual, which is Attachment 8 in your booklet. We also adopted Chapter 6.07 regulating the prevention of fog entering the wastewater system. Now, when the board adopted these new regulations, adopted the code and along with the new program, they grandfathered in existing food service establishments, and one of those FSC restaurants was Denny's. So they were grandfathered in. They did not need to require, they did not have to require to install a grease interceptor. However, they are required to expect to comply with our code, our operations code, patrol manual, and their fog discharge permit. This is a copy of the discharge permit. It's current right now, expires in 2021. This is, I believe, Exhibit 9, Attachment 9 in your attachment. And you see where I circled here, it says as a condition has been granted to the permit suspending the requirement to install a grease interceptor. However, the conditional waiver can be revoked if any items based on failure to adhere to best management practices or identification to your facility as a significant contributor of fog into the sewer system, which is based on inspections or requirements of the evidence and general permit conditions applied to this permit. So the district has the authority to revoke this requirement if we can prove that grease is causing the SSOs. So here's one of the SSOs that occurred on August 2nd, 2013. I don't know how large this was, but as you can see from the pictures, it was significant. And we did call CNR drains to help us on that day. And there was another SSO on October 4th, 2015. These are the pictures of that spill. Again, it was quite significant. And that's outside the cleaning. So after this spill, we did send an enforcement letter. This is a copy of that enforcement letter, which is in your attachment, and we did require preventative measures. One of those measures was to CCTV, closed circuit televised video during tower sewer laterals, make improvements to any structural deficiencies in their sewer laterals. And then up here, we also told, required them to hydrojet their lateral every three months, and they must contact us three days before they're cleaning their lateral. And they also must keep and maintain records of hydrojetting and any kind of maintenance of their lateral. That was October 5th, 2015. And then a few years later, we had another spill there. This is January 29th, 2019. So then we follow up with another enforcement letter on February 4th, and a lot of preventative measures were very similar to the 2015 with a couple of exceptions. One, we required them to increase their clean frequencies from three months every two months. And we did indicate, here's where I circled that, because there's been a historical SSO since property, if they have another one, we're going to require them to install a grease interceptor. So what happened was, yes, another one occurred on May 19th, 2015. If you can picture the spill for that day. So then we sent another enforcement letter, and this is the letter that we indicated, you will require install grease interceptor within 100 days of this notification. I do want to mention that on that last sewer spill, we did send an invoice to Denny's to recoup our costs, it was staff's cost along with costs of CNR drains. That was $1,465.13. The due date was June 29th, 2019. As per our code, operations code, Section 4.01.060, any past due invoices are subject to late penalties and invoices, or late penalties and interest. We received the amount, $1,046.13, two months after past due, so we already applied interest and late penalties. Those late interest, late payments were not paid, so Denny's still owes the district $195.88. That is due on September 30th. If that bill is not paid, again, additional interest will be applied. I just want to make sure that the full payment is not paid full. This is an email we received from Denny's in Attachment 6, explaining that they don't believe, with Joe, you're here at layers this morning, that they believe that it's not, grease is not the cause of the sewer spill. They believe it's the homeless activity that are disposing items in their restrooms. As you see here, there's this homeless and prostitution, they believe it's causing the spill. Along with this attachment, they did submit some backup information proving that they were cleaning the system. I think that's in your packet. I responded to this email stating that based on the closed circuit television that we did on May 27th, 2019, proved that there was still fog into the system, and that's why we believe grease is the cause of the spill. And what I'm going to show you right now is a three-minute video of that, of the CCTV, so you can see what we're talking about in regards to the grease spilled up in the pipe. It's about, it's about three minutes long, so just...
Mr. Carroll, could you lay a little foundation for when this was created? Who took the pictures?
This was created on the date here, May 20th, uh, May 5th.
And what reach it is?
27. It was, Steve, do you remember who it was done by, Steve? Was it by a...
Is this the day of the spill?
It was May 27th, 2018.
Was it done internally or by a contractor? He didn't do it, so I'd have to be a contractor.
So do you know who the contractor was?
Either Pro Pye or CNR.
Yeah, I think it was Pro Pye. Yeah, it was Pro Pye.
And does this depict the actual lateral going from...
Yes, this is the lateral. This is Denny's lateral right now. As you see the white stuff here, this is grease. As you see, it'll get thicker as we get closer. All of this right here is grease. Again, you can see it's still, it's remnants of grease, all the white stuff. That's all grease.
Can I ask a couple of studio questions?
That's not grease.
When, when are we going to be allowed to ask questions?
This is all grease. We believe it's grease. And we have a lot of people have testified in staff.
That's the top of it. It's upside down.
This is all top of pipe?
We looking at it upside down?
At least up. You see how, this is, this is all, all this is grease right here. You see how it's all kicked off? We get stick, everyone's get closer. Maybe that's all grease. See how it's getting bigger?
Is this going towards the building or like...
Away.
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 See right here, it's going, it's going to kick down the top. See all that grease? You see on top of the water?
Is that the top or the bottom? That's the top now, isn't it? It still looks like that.
So that's...
The water...
So yeah, see the water at the top, so we're outside now, but you see all the grease at the bottom? All that right there.
We still haven't gotten able to have water at the top.
That's all grease right there.
Scott, to point out too, this video was taken very recently after a cleaning. So they had the spill, the line was hydrojetted, and then they did the CCTV. So this is even after cleaning, we're still seeing...
Do you have any idea when the hydrojetting was done?
It was within a day of the sewer spill.
No, we, like, we got that in one day?
Uh, no, more than likely it wasn't removed.
Oh, okay.
Do we have, do you identify your name and position for the record?
I'm sorry, I'm Joseph Jenkins. I'm with EEC Environmental. We manage the fats, oils, and grease program for the district.
You manage the fog program?
Yes.
So after I sent that email to, to Denny's, we received this letter, again, reiterating that they believe that the cause is not grease, it's caused by the homeless. As you seen in this letter, they said they put sunglasses, underarmets, needles into the sewer system. But I don't think, Steve, we didn't see any of that when we, when we came in, I didn't see any of that stuff when we responded, so. I also want to mention that late communication, as I mentioned earlier, it came in last Friday. You can have a copy of that, it's also available to the public. It was an email dated last Friday. Attached to that email was an email from Ivan Gonzalez. And in that email, he says that for the past two years, for Nando's Plumbing and Rooter Services, hydrojet CCTV for every, every three months the last two years. And then there's also a letter there from Mike Kilbright, dated September 19th, 2019, said that they completed the repairs on the lateral from February, March, double 17, which is good, but, but as you see below, we required them to hydrojet every three months back to 2015. And they're saying they started doing that in 2017, a little bit, about two years behind. Then we also had an SSO and on January 29th, as I mentioned earlier, and then we told that Denny's to start hydrojetting every two months. We don't have any records of that's occurring right now. And then we had an SSO on May 19th, so just want to kind of responding to that, to that email that, that late communication received.
Late communication is part of the record now?
Yes.
Is it be given to the board?
Yes, yes.
Excuse me, let's be...
You, you have a chance to...
Okay, because I want to correct. It says 2000 we doing hydrojetting.
Okay, you'll have a chance to cross-examine and a chance to put on your own case.
Yes, sir.
So according to our operations code, Section 6.07170, it says on our reading verbatim, says food service establishments found to have contributed to a sewer blockage, SSO, or any sewer system interference resulting from the discharge of wastewater containing fog, shall be ordered to install and maintain a grease interceptor, and may be subject to a plan to evade the nuisance and prevent any future health hazards created by sewer line blockages. This is in their code. So we believe Denny's has a couple of options. They can install a 700 gallon gravity grease interceptor, which is the picture one. The pros, it's a large capacity, provides best defense against the fog, fog discharge to sewers, requires less pumping, but the cost is, it is expensive, you know, at least $50,000, and you know, as you can see, you have to excavate into the, in a parking lot and bury it in a parking lot, and that can get disruptive. It might require a temporary closure. You know, with Denny's, I think open 24 hours, it probably would require some temporary closures. That's, that's a con. Another suggestion, that's what staff recommends, it's probably would be less disruptive to the business, is installing a large hydro mechanic GI or HTI on the building exterior. These are a couple of examples. It provides more options for installations, smaller excavation areas, more frequent pumping was the column, but it's still quite costly, $35,000, $45,000. So in conclusion, the staff believes we provide the evidence that Denny's is a significant contributor of fog into the wastewater system. As per operations code, FSCs found to have contributed to the SSO resulting from the discharge of wastewater containing fog, shall be ordered to install and maintain grease interceptor, and it may be subject to a plan to evade the nuisance and prevent any future health hazards created by sewer lines, blockages. In conclusion, staff recommends terminating Denny's variance and ordering the establishment to install and maintain a grease interceptor. That concludes my, my case, my presentation. I do have Joe Jenkins from EEC, our fog administrator, here to answer the questions. Also, Rob Hemers, a engineering, and Steve Carlin, our wastewater maintenance coordinator, are also here to answer the questions.
Does anyone on our staff have, or our board have any questions to the staff? Do you have any questions?
Yeah. Okay. Is this the same lateral that was repaired by the contractor?
Yes, yes.
That's the same, same one?
Yes.
And did any of the water or sewer spillage reach the storm drains?
Yes, they did, all those spills.
Did we get fined for any of those?
No, they're small.
They're private sales, private, sorry, so they're not going to, they're not going to find us for privacy. We took responsibility to prevent, try to prevent as much wastewater coming into the waterways.
I'll save my next question after.
Bob, it looked like hydrojetting was very effective, except near, you know, where the video was stopped. I guess I'd like to talk to the contractor and or Steve, you know, to see why the hydrojetting was failing, failing to clean that sewer completely.
Well, I believe it's also a flat line, and at the flat area, that's where all the grease is going to sit, and you can tell it was thick, and when the guy was probably hydrated, he really can't see what he's cleaning until he's done, and then they send him...
It doesn't look like he bothered to get that far.
Can't tell, we, whoever televised didn't get that far, it was underwater.
Paul, Rob? Rob, do you want to add to that?
First of all, I'd like to ask Dennis Ruiz, what repairs he made on the lateral, please?
What we did was, we excavated the area behind the cleanout at where the drive approach transitions into the asphalt parking lot. When we first did it, we, we put a camera in to try to locate where the problem was, and similar to this, it was full of waters, you can't see anything, you see murkiness. So we pushed the locator head as far as we could go, and it was the vicinity of that cleanout. And so that's where we excavated. We found a collapsed pipe at that, at that location. So we pumped it out, and I, my workers looked down the pipe, you know, with a flashlight. We could see that the next joint had also dropped. So basically, the joint of pipe where the cleanout was had completely dropped. So we went in and got a city permit so we could dig up the drive approach, and we did the repair of that section of pipe. So that, that particular problem was definitely caused by the dropped pipe. So we brought it up to grade and rebedded the pipe and backfilled.
And what year was that, please?
17, I believe, 2017.
And could you also bring back the overall map, please? Just to clarify one thing Steve said. Gina, can you bring the...
What do you want, please?
The map, the first map we saw.
The very first slide.
Yes, thank you. First slide, just want to show... Okay, Scott, could you point out the building, please? And then, one of the problems here is that Harbor is to the left of the red there. The sewer is not there. The sewer has to come out the side of the building and go all the way up to Geesler.
Behind the station.
Over there. So it's a long lateral that goes down the side or the back right there. Uh huh. It has to do all of that length. It has to do all of that length. And Steve just said it's a flat lateral. So there's very little slope in the lateral, which is part of the cause. If you have slope, you, your water runs faster. There's hardly any slope, so that if there's grease in the line and then flow gets low, like at night, the grease just settles out. So it's an ongoing problem. So grease is deposited in the, in the line on a daily basis. Because there's always grease in the line because there's no grease device. The length is very long and no slope, so it's just an ongoing problem. Director Oden was correct when he said hydrogening did a great job, does an awesome job. High-pressure water scours that grease out right away. But the minute you're done, that night, here it comes again. So it either needs to remove the grease from coming into the line through an interceptor or it has to be hydrogeded a lot. And that's a lot of what the problem is. So the structural items were fixed and the, by the way, the, of course, the sewer at Geesler is very shallow, too. So none of that's helping anything. But you either have to stop the grease from getting into the lateral or hydrojet that thing very, very often to prevent the grease from settling out. So it's a, it's a daily problem.
Any others, board members?
Very first thing you said was that, how many years did they have nine SSOs?
Yes.
How many years?
Since 1987.
So 20 years.
Yeah.
How many public SSOs have we had in that same town?
Don't know, have to look at it.
Yes.
Probably about nine.
Well, I was gonna say it's pretty close.
Right.
On that map, and since you have that up, the, the public waste area, or the public drain area, whatever you wanna call it, it's just on the other side of Carmax, it's called the Geesler something channel. Which runs about half a block from my house eventually. That goes directly to San Antonio River, which directly goes into Civic Ocean, correct?
Correct.
Where, if, if we were to have a major SSO in that corner, where does it enter that channel? By Carmax, on the other side of Carmax, on the other side of Harbor.
We, we have our storm drain maps. I have it in my car and Steve has it in his truck, you can go out there and get that.
No, no, I don't, that's not, it's pretty close.
Yes, it is.
Very close. I mean, we've had incidents where the alien time used to dump stuff and it would come down there. So that is a pretty significant impact on the, on the public safety, that channel, correct?
Right, Steve said that a lot of them did make it to the waters of the state.
Yeah, and the coyotes love to run up and down that channel. I'm gonna, I don't know if I'm gonna ask Joe this or staff this, but the ownership of Dennis is saying that it isn't a grease problem, it's a homeless problem, that they are putting things into the sewer. When I look at the pictures that you've given us in our report, that means the homeless people are picking up manhole covers and dumping stuff in there.
No, they think, they're putting it in the toilets.
Inside the restaurant.
Yes, yes.
I'm a little confused, and Joe, maybe you can help, because the email dated June 3, 2019, says in the middle, that, where would this was from? Dan West, we don't have any plumbing inside Dennis' four walls at all. What does that mean? Do you know, Joe?
I'm not sure, I mean, they would definitely have plumbing inside their restaurant.
I mean, in that, Dennis, a number of times, and I know I've used the facilities.
No, no, no plumbing problem, doing that plug.
So that's just, there was, the word problem was left out of that sentence.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Sure, well, plumbing.
So homeless people are coming in and using that bathroom, they're dumping stuff in the toilets and they're leaving the restaurant.
You're taking a shower, you wash yourself, dumping a lot of paper, and that, but you see, a lot of the picture you see there, it's not a grease, it's blocking by accumulation of toilet paper, hand towel, and there's a lot of object also in there. I mean, it's not a block because of grease, if you can see the picture, you'll see the grease outside the surface.
With all due respect, I have to respond to staff, so.
Okay.
In the videotapes, Steve, did you really see any evidence?
No, that's, that's all grease from, you see it kicked on the walls and the top of the pipe.
Okay, that, Joe?
So typically, what happens in a sewer is you have grease accumulate around the pipe and it won't necessarily completely plug the pipe, because the water pushes holes through. But any debris, that anything that can come down will hit that and
Causing.
And cause, and then it creates a surface where grease can then build on it, and then that's where you build up a blockage. It's, it's, my guess, the grease is, if you don't have a lot of grease accumulation, that debris typically can flow through a pipe. Because you have people flushing towels and whatnot in a lot of buildings in the city and they're not having frequent sewer spills.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
I've got a question, if in dealing with this situation, is there any other approach you could take that, that wouldn't be as expensive, but would still be effective?
Yes, Steve.
Well, you know, Mr. President, he's gonna have his opportunity to put his case on later. If he had a question of staff, that would probably be good enough. I think he's gonna probably make that part of his case, so.
Okay, well, we can pass, pass by.
Do you want, do you want to cross, cross the question?
Yeah, we have to have a, if it's appropriate, one more question, staff?
Yeah, the water flow was pretty, looked like it was pretty deep, it looked like that's about an eight-inch sewer. Or it, it, whatever size drain it was, the water was pretty deep, near the end of the video. What causes that water to be at that depth? That, that, our, our most makes the sanitary district sewer drains probably down to college, home station.
That's up near the end of the line, so there's, there's no water coming down the main line.
So that wouldn't have been caused by the main line?
That was more of a sag.
Oh, okay.
In the lateral, I, one more explanatory, I have. I just wanted to explain to the board that once you put a grease interceptor in, so it goes out in the parking lot and you have to cut up your floor, because only the kitchen fixtures go through the grease interceptor. So the bathroom facilities do not. So in this case, you have to cut up the floor, separate the two plumbing systems, one being the bathrooms, one being the kitchen. Then the grease, the kitchen pipes go through the interceptor and then out into the lateral. Then in comes the bathroom. So grease interceptor will not stop whatever is put down in a bathroom, because it'll come in past the interceptor. The interceptor is made for grease, not for towels and wipes and products. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else on board?
Well, Rob, the, the sag in the line causes the water flow to, the water depth in the sewer to rise as it would at any siphon or sag in the line. And that, that, that's the particular reason that grease accumulates there, because the water is at a, at a, at a particular depth and it's going slower because of the sag.
Yes, exactly. A sag is bad news for grease.
Any sewer.
Right.
So, Joe, another, one more quick, Mike, just, there's a variance on this property that's been in place, I assume, since the construction of the property?
Since the past, the fog, the fog, uh, uh.
All right, I'm sorry, since the construction of the fog program? Why was the variance given?
Because it was the board's direction to any, any restaurants that are already established before the renovation had adopted, they were brand model.
Okay, that's, thank you.
We have quite a few restaurants that are brand model.
Yeah, I, interesting.
Can I ask a clarifying question of just? So Rob is, and maybe Joe also, as I am understanding it, since the syringes and whatever is being dumped down the bathroom is gonna go down the bathroom anyway with a grease interceptor. The grease interceptor assists by not allowing the grease, and it's a combination of the grease and these products that combine that causes the overflow.
Correct. So the grease is like a
Glue.
It's going to just create a dam. You have the sag which slows down flow. Then you put some grease in there, wrap some products in there, like a beaver, cause a dam. And it just happened, it starts every day.
So if grease isn't there, that stuff will flow out?
Hopefully.
Yeah, hopefully.
But you could still have a blockage, but if it's not caused by grease, it wouldn't be, you know, no, it might be nobody's fault if somebody poured concrete down your, down your bathroom, you know, snuck in there and did that.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Let's move along to.
This would be the opportunity for the, Mr. Vechai to ask any questions he might have to the staff, or any of the professionals, manager, Mr. Connel, Mr. Hammers, or Mr.?
It's your turn to put on the, your, your.
Well, you guys already what?
Actually, this is just your chance to ask questions, then you get a chance to put on your whole case.
Well, I mean, we, we, we've been working with you guys. Scott, I know Scott recommended for me, he was underground company, which is based here, was my underground company, so we tried to solve the problem, because we serve the community, we'll be 24 hours, we serve everybody coming in.
Mr. Vechai, did you have no questions of anybody?
No, I, we're trying, I don't know what else we can do, we try to make sure.
This is your opportunity to present your case if you're doing that, but before you get to that, there's a chance to ask questions of staff.
Oh, the only question I have, when the situation happened, nobody knew to buy the restaurant, right away you guys calling other company, not even my plumbing company, and that was concern I had, don't give us opportunity to find what was there when you take the other side company. I don't get my regular plumbing to EEC or whatever plumbing, because I have my own plumbing for my other DAS restaurant. So that's all you are doing, so giving me a chance to see what's going on there at the time, because I have a hydrogening. We do it every two months, and my guy, when he go there for anything, like for cashing, we take a picture three time a day. Seven o'clock in the morning, after five o'clock and midnight, just in case before it happened. This has happened since May, incident, my manager take a picture, and I have sent you some of the picture. Every single day I get three time a day pictures, just to make sure we catch any blockage before it go to the, to the main city line. And we've been doing so, anything right away, we stop anything in the restaurant, we call our plumber, we take care of it. The last two, three incidents, you guys call direct to your plumbing company you guys, the contractor was, and they don't have give, I mean, sure, they take grease wherever, but been talking to my guy, with the health department came, you guys contact the health department. And she was in the weekend, actually, because it's last incident happened in the weekend. And she said, did they call you about the incident, about you have a sore issue, she said, no. It just came in, we closed the restaurant voluntarily, because just in case if anything, we're gonna have no sore problem in the restaurant. We have a plumbing, nothing is plugged in the restaurant outside, it's some accumulation of all you can see is a lot of hand towel, paper towel. And any object, somebody dumped in the restaurant, you know, like I said, we dumped a lot of stuff in our toilet. And sometimes clogging the restaurant, we call and fix the restaurant, sometimes it goes through, and mostly it's accumulation, maybe a combination of hand paper, hand, hand towel, toilet paper, stuff like that. So I just, because even if we do grease, after we give the hearing today, it's gonna happen, I have other Dennis, they have the same situation across. I mean, it happened outside the building because something they have inside the, the pipe, and we called the plumber to take care of it, and we closed one of the offices. That's the only question I have for them, in the future, just let us know. I'm done with question.
I didn't hear any question, I thought that was your case. Do you have more, do you have more to say, your case?
I've done bring my attorney with me, so you're an attorney, right?
Yeah, but I'm, as I said, board, I'm not.
I'm coming here as a, as a good businessman here, I'll never let this, Mr. Dennis here. As you guys can see, the situation happened, we get 2,000, here's 2,000 who purchased the restaurant. The sanitary, I don't remember who the person, the time was a long time ago, nine gentleman came in and explained the situation, and we said, okay, we do hydrogening, they're required to have a hydrogen every three months, we've been doing hydrogen every three months. And as you can see, the hydrogen is not gonna eliminate any blockage, because sewer or any toilet paper or, or hand towel on there. We've been doing that, and we have every single receipt since 2000. How many incidents happened? About what, four time major incident happened for last 19 years? And sure, you guys contact your plumber and we take care of it. So how much that every, 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 every four years happen, the situation actually, surprisingly, it doesn't happen every week or every, every year. Last time it happened, 2015, 19, and we, before that was 2013. So you look at every three years or four years, something major happened. So as expensive, $50,000 or $40,000 to the business, and interruption, we don't know what other expense is gonna take to close a restaurant and doing a grease trap, so it's not really making sense to me as a business, the cost of it. And you can see, we're doing everything to make sure nothing go to the storm drain, and that's, like I said, we're taking a picture to make sure nothing happens outside of it. My plumbing, I'm not sure if it's connected to the gas station behind us, and I don't know what they do in the gas station, it's a gas station. You guys maybe know that they have a grease trap, I'm not sure if they have a grease trap, I know they have food. And the grease is not coming because somebody dumped the grease in the drain. This is from the floor when they cleaned the floor, because rather grease, then dumped all the oil, all the fryer, all the, so it's only all the clean, the floor, any grease going in. And we'll be doing a good job in hydrogening, and you can see even the picture, you can see the water flowing before, after, actually, we sent him some, actually, video the same time when it happened. I know it's black and white, but it was also, you can see it's water flowing. I'm not sure the white spot there is a grease or paper towel, I'm not sure, I'm not expert on that.
Any questions?
Do we get to ask anything?
Yeah.
And the staff, you would probably get to ask first and then you could ask after that.
Any questions?
I'd like to respond to his comments, to the SSO over four years, and this restaurant's not bad. I do have, and I'll confirm with my staff, I don't believe we're experienced, any other, any other FSCs in our communities has as many SSOs as this restaurant has. So that's, that's a factor we need to consider. Yes, he's been very cooperative with us, yes, we try, you know, like a freshman of war, we wanna be business friendly, we want to work with the business, but it comes to a point where you say, okay, enough's enough, we gotta do something, because sewer spills are a threat to public health and safety. When we sent our contractor out CRNR there, we only do it because, because time is of essence to stop the SSO or these blockage. And their plumbers can't get out as fast as we can, they were sentencing on our drainage, and that's been like always a huge issue in case. That's always been the case. So that's all I got, it's one of that, that's what comes ahead for it.
Okay, Bob?
Well, the SSOs have to be stopped.
Yes.
The SSOs are caused by grease. The original problem was a contractor failure to compact the area below the cleanout line, which could have been installed after the, after the lateral was installed. And or if it was installed with the lateral, it happened to sink. And that was the original structural problem with, with the sewer lateral. We have a second structural problem with the sewer lateral, which is the sag. If the sag wasn't there, the grease would probably go on, go through and the hydrogening could, could eliminate the grease, and it would probably be a long-term accumulation of grease or, or no accumulation. But the hydrogening will not be effective as long as the sag is in place. So the second problem was caused by the original construction of the lateral, So the second problem was caused by the original construction of the lateral, which would cause the sag to be in the line, and that water flow rises and the grease accumulates. So somehow, that lateral has to be made to allow grease and/or foreign objects, you know, to travel through to the mainland. And my suspicion is this restaurant, like the hundred other food service establishments that have a correct lateral, the reason they don't have these kinds of issues is because their sewer lateral was constructed correctly. So I think if, if in fact, well, I think the sag has to be eliminated, and if it cannot be eliminated, then the grease has to be eliminated to allow the grease to accumulate and/or foreign objects to be hung up on that grease. So I think the choice is the owner of the restaurant has to figure out a way to keep grease from accumulating there. His choices are, as presented, and/or he has to go in and eliminate that sag in the line, and that may take care of the problem. So I think it's his choice, but if he doesn't have other choices, he cannot continue to have sanitary sewer overflows.
Mr. President? This is, just wanted to remind mine, board, this is a time for the board to ask any last questions they have. And then when you take the matter under submission, then we'll be trying to deliberate and engage in the analysis, if I just...
I have an actual question. Mine wasn't a question.
Rob, I guess, whoever, we're talking about the laterals, particularly from Dennis. Does the, is there any way that that lateral is involved with the Chevron station?
We believe they're separate laterals, correct Steve?
Yeah.
Does it have any interaction with Motel Six?
Negative.
Does it have any interaction with Raising Canes?
Don't believe so.
Okay, so this lateral, the gentleman had mentioned that there could be something comes grease coming from the Chevron station. None of the other businesses surrounding, Canes has a lot of grease, I mean, they cook that chicken in grease, that has no bearing on this lateral whatsoever.
That's correct.
Okay. These SSOs, did they occur from the lateral or did they occur in the street?
Where Dennis from Mike Kilbride repaired the sewer lateral was really under the drive approach, which is part of the street, because it was really, it was really busted up from all those years of heavy duty traffic.
Jar pushed by Geisler or...
Pardon?
Jar pushed by Geisler.
Geisler, yeah.
So, so these SSOs did not come from anybody else's lateral except Dennis?
Right. And it's a long, it's a long, flat sloping lateral. It might be possible, it might not be possible to get that sag out. We don't know.
Explain that, that was going to be my next question, if you don't mind. So the lateral is coming like this and it dips?
Yes.
Come back out, or is it just dip and go?
Exactly. We'd have to do some survey work to see if it's possible to have a continuous grade that doesn't include a sag.
Which means the whole lateral has to be then?
Possibly, we don't know.
What's the cost of that as opposed to a grease interceptor?
Well, first you have to do a survey to verify that you can regrade the lateral. Then you have to talk to someone like Dennis from Mike Kilbride, who's a contractor. So we don't know whether that's an option. As we sit here today, it's possible that it is studied, but I don't believe we know today whether it could be reconstructed at a positive grade the whole way.
Okay, real quick, the gentleman indicated that the grease is coming from cleanup. There has to be some grease on from the dishwasher, there has to be, it's not just grease off floors that's causing this, there's got to be grease coming from other sources.
Joe?
Yeah, so Dennis is what we call full-service restaurant, which means they have, they have non-disposable dishware that they use, they serve the customers, so like plates, silverware, spoons and forks. So all of those plates need to be washed. They probably have a pre-wash sink to get the, the stuff gets rinsed off before it goes into the dishwasher. So that would be one major source. So any food waste, any grease waste that's on the plate is then being washed off into the drain. And then at the three compartment sink, any pots, pans, utensils, anything like that that they're using, is in there. You know, so it's, you know, the only thing they have right now preventing that is if the employees are doing what we call kitchen best management practices, which is scraping stuff into garbage cans. But when you have as much production from a 24-hour restaurant, there's only so much BOPs to do. It's, I would say any other new Dennis would have a full-service grease interceptor installed, you know, if they're a brand new store. Definitely, so we call a high-reducating stuff.
Does Canes have grease interceptor?
Yes, they do.
I have a question here. Can I ask you a question? What does it cost to, if you could tell us what, to hydrojet twice every two months? What's it cost to?
It costs about $4.75 every time.
It's on receipts. It says about $4.75.
The number change, time goes by, price went up.
I was just asking, in case you wanted to do it more frequently. It would cost a lot of money.
Sure, that's a reasonable cost.
Yeah, is that reasonable?
For, yeah, they have to hydrojet all the way down to parking lot.
Harley?
Yeah, I have a question to you. And that is, do you not have any signs of saying only people can participate if they're eating here, that they could use the...
The restroom?
Yeah.
We use the restroom for customer only, but we're not patrolling 24 hours. I mean, you're eating at night, so staff is not, food staff. Plus, Dennis, we serve everybody. We cannot discriminate about serving anybody count our restaurant. I mean, that's another issue, we got to make sure direction.
Well, you can discriminate at the...
We put a lock in the restroom, so they have a coin lock. I mean, some restaurants, it's based on image. To do that, we use a talking, but I don't really like it, and so many customer, regular customers don't like it.
I think with, you know, blaming it on that, that you should do something on that.
Well, we're doing as much as best we can, but sometimes we go between 24 hours, the door is open twice. Somebody sneaking in, usually that's what happened, day or night, somebody coming in, washing himself, cleaning himself, take a shower, actually, in the restaurant. Yeah, so it's...
Well, maybe you should put on that sign, we will be arrested.
I don't know, sometimes we got to do some other laws.
Something, yes, yes. Some people are released, and then that way...
And you are in California, anybody can sue us for any discrimination, any different color, different, you know.
Okay, Bob?
Where is the cleanup for this restaurant?
We have three different cleanup behind the building, one by the back door, one by the emergency door, there is one behind, I believe, the gas station, and there is one by the sidewalk.
So that, is that the one that I heard?
I'm not sure which one, we've been talking about, I mean, that's why we call, that's one of the, it was four, three years ago, and we get Dennis to work on that, and based on his statement...
When, when the video showed huge accumulation, or large accumulation on the top pipe, Steve, do you know if that was near one of these cleanouts?
I'm not sure of that location, there's no footage on the video either.
Yes.
So I don't know what cleanup they went into at first either.
When, when the sewer was overflowing, where did it start?
It started right in the middle, I believe, based on the picture between the past...
So that was the lowest cleanup upstream of the blockage?
Right below Geisler's where it comes out.
Okay, does either side have a desire to make a closing statement or brief argument?
Sure, I'll, I'll start. I'll just, again, reiterate my last slide. I believe we have demonstrated in the video that their fog is a contributing factor to the SSO, as you heard from staff. It's not fog alone, but it's other items that are getting flushed down the system, get stuck into the fog. So if you're from staff, if the fog was eliminated, those materials, if it is like towel wipes and needles, whatever, flushed down the system. We don't let needles down the system, but they're doing it, you know, it does happen, and if there's no grease there, they won't prevent that. Mr., I guess, I kind of jumped ahead again here, but Vice President Wu suggested repairing the sag, that could be one of your alternatives to solving grease interceptor. And then if the sag's fixed and we're still finding SSOs caused by grease, then we come back here and do this again, and then we probably do an interceptor. But as, as Vice President Wu mentioned, this is a restaurant that is experiencing significant SSOs that needs to be stopped, more SSOs than we've experienced in other restaurants, so you just can't, you know, look the other way, something has to be done. So we're looking for direction from the board on what we want to do. So that concludes my presentation.
Do Dennis have any...
Well, I mean, that's what I said earlier, you know, that that blockage does not happen every week or every month. We just, you can say two years, three years. Having sometimes, so privately myself, if I really have a major problem, why it doesn't happen soft? It is doing, you have a problem, it happen constantly, have a broken line, something constantly going to have a blockage. That's all what I'm saying, and just being, giving to that expense of putting $50,000 grease trap, plus there's other calculations not being added there of closing the restaurant for other parking lot repairs, not there. So talking maybe $100,000 of cost on the restaurant for something happening every two, three months, given. I mean, we'll get a chance, sure, I'd like to work with the sanitary district, and what part of the question is, we don't be, I mean, we want to take care of what the public does as well. That's something very important to us.
Well, if nobody has anything else, Bob?
I'd like to add one thing. Again, I'll repeat what I said before, grease apparently is the, is the problem.
Is this going to be part of deliberations, or is there going to be a question?
Oh, well, do we get time to talk later?
Yes, you do. Once you take it under submission, then nobody can offer any additional evidence, and then it lies with the board to deliberate and make a decision. I'm just trying to get you to that point.
I'm very excited. I apologize.
So, does either side care to make, make a closing statement on what on the...
They, I believe they both did, so now it's time to take the matter under submission and deliberate.
So now the matter will be submitted, the board will consider the party's presentations and issue formal written decision. Thank you all for appearing, and we'll do our best to be fair. And, you know, we are pro-business, we're not trying to put anybody out of business, and, but, we've got to stand by our guns and make sure that what needs to get done gets done. So, thank you once again, you will be notified...
Well, you actually do your deliberation now, and you can state for the deliberation.
Okay. Art? I would like to propose that we change this from two months to one month, to see if that would solve the situation. It's going to be an expense for you as the owner, that maybe buy a way to build up new interceptor. And I hope you figure out another, like $3,000 a year, for 10 years. I mean, it's, that would be something for you to say, do you think that would help?
I mean, we'll do everything possible to show, I mean, if I really have a gun in my head and I have to grease it, I don't want to do it, but I will work on every month. I will, like I say...
That's what I'm throwing out.
Yeah, we taking picture every morning, every afternoon, every night, to make sure nothing, if anything happen, we catch it right away before we...
Can I ask a question of our staff?
If you bring more evidence into the hearing, then you need to reopen the hearing and allow everybody to...
Of course, applying submission is go to once, once a month, and then see what happens. Bob?
An alternative that I would, I would propose is the same kind of process that we use in manholes, where we suspect that, you know, the water level would be rising. That might be the smart cover. I don't know how big the cleanouts are, or how fast that water comes up, but I think if the, if Dennis knew that the water level was beginning to rise, you know, then at least their response could be quicker. It's not, it's not a manhole, it's probably a cleanup, it's just a pipe, and so, and depending on how much, you know, so I would suggest, you know, they do water conservation practices and figure out, or potentially as an alternative, figure out that the water level, the lateral bit blocked, and the water level's beginning to rise, and I, at least their response could be quicker. I don't even know if that's an alternative. We use that alternative, you know, in and around our pump stations and or where we, where we have sags and things. They could even build a manhole, maybe much, much cheaper than, than a grease interceptor. The grease has, the grease either has to be stopped, or they have the knowledge, simply know that it's happening, and have enough response time to do something about it. So it's either a grease interceptor, figure out why, why the grease is stopping at that particular point and repair it, or know that an impending SSO is about to happen.
Really?
I like directed period this idea, but I'd like to cap it and put for how long? In other words, you're saying to submit this each month, but for how long?
Were you asking any question?
Yeah, six months.
I had thought of that, but it could be for one year variance, and see if there's any SSOs. If it happens within that one year, then our next choice would be a grease interceptor.
I could see six months to get an idea, because to me, if it's going to happen, it's going to happen. But a year is kind of, that's a long time to put up with.
I didn't think about the length of the time, but I just do that idea, I'm worried.
Like I said, I like the idea, but to be business friendly at the same time, you know, not for extended time without putting a lid on it.
Well, lid will be determined by if there's another SSO, then that variance is, and then we have to go to the grease interceptor.
You wouldn't be required to put a term in, and you could just see how this works, and then if it seemed to be excessive or there's problems, then your manager would bring another case before you to go for the grease interceptor or something else. So you, you wouldn't actually term it, but you could if you wanted to, to see how, see how it went.
Rob?
Just another idea? You know what, we're, we've got, all the evidence has been in now, if you want to reopen the evidence, everybody's here, we can all ask questions again, go through another round? That's okay.
I'm going to go a little wrong. I think doing what you're talking about doing is just prolonging the variable. If this Dennis is going to be built tomorrow, we would require a grease interceptor. I believe that the public safety dictates that we require him to put in a grease interceptor. I just think that, I'm struggling with this idea of best business practices, as this was brought up. You know, best business practice is you do everything you can to make sure your business is operating... your business is operating in a safe and efficient manner, that's why the county grades you. I don't believe this business has done enough to prevent the SSOs. I mean, he tells us that customers are coming in and dumping things in the toilet. There are ways to prevent that. I mean, if you have to go to a coin-operating system, it may not look good, but it's gonna keep vagrants and transients from just using your bathroom. If people are coming in and using the bathrooms, and then leaving in and out of that restaurant using, that's not a good business, best business practice.
Well, sir, you're working in a car, you're in the bathroom, trouble. You know, we're gonna stop you going to bathroom, come on, I can get soup.
The hearing's been closed, the matter now belongs to the board.
Okay, I, I just, I believe that grease interceptor, um, is eventually gonna be required at this business, and for us to push it down the road six months or a year, waiting on another SSO, which could be worse, and could get into that storm drain that's, that's out there, I, I just think we need to, to do the full thing to require it. And I, and I'm probably in the minority, and I, that's fine, but I, I just don't see kicking the can down the road.
I don't think, I don't think you're the minority, but we're just, I just threw out suggestions.
Yeah, I understand.
I can see your point, you know, for the benefit of the... Well, I like Darlene's approach, I mean, six months is not a very long time, and, and we, we should know something by that, that period of time. And if it does, uh, show its ugly head again, then, you know, we, we pull the variance and, and you gotta put in an interceptor. Well, we have to go to a new case, a new case. I have to add that, yes. But that's what I'm, you're in favor of. Uh, do I hear a motion? Well, the motion I would make would be that you, he, Denny's, we have to go to a monthly service, and then if there's an S, they might, you know, you can alter my motion if you need to. If, if the SSO again happens, then we have to go to, uh, another case. Would it be here?
Do we wanna do a time period on it?
I, I don't, I don't know, I mean, I, it's, that's my motion, I don't, I don't forget a second.
I would second the idea that there's a time period on it. And, uh, within six months, do the trial, and if anything happens, they just have to go ahead and put a grease trap on it.
Well, that's why I said, if anything happens, next week, it goes.
Yeah, ask what happens after the six months, if there's, if no spill there.
That's right, that's why I didn't have any time period on it. If it happens, you go right back to another hearing, and then, then the cost would be great, probably.
Yeah, especially on the history, it's show every three years, four years.
So that's, that's, that's my motion, but I would give a second, or we have a second, but we do.
Is part of your motion, you're gonna put something about, I mean, obviously, they've been doing it on a regular basis now, more regular basis now. It's not working, and, and I don't care whether it's every three years they have an SSO or every six months, they have an SSO, that's, that's what we're trying to stop. So there has to be some kind of monitoring or some kind of reporting to us that this is taking place on, on a monthly basis.
Well, I think they have to do it, EDC would do that for us, wouldn't they? Would, would EDC be checking them if they do it on a monthly basis?
Yes, we would.
Okay. So that would be reported back?
Well, the... Okay, that's, we have not taken testimony.
But, uh, I can go with your proposal, have it done right away, but I just threw that out.
That's, I understand, I understand.
It's been moved, is, any further discussion? Well, yeah, so there's no additional added up to my motion is, as soon as it happens again, we go back to a hearing, establish what the needs are at that time.
Oh, in other words, not for six months?
Not for six months.
Okay.
If it happens next week, we'll go back there, another hearing. Wouldn't it finally be, you know, occurred in? Now, I'm just, I, I'd say like gentlemen, we try to be business-friendly, but the business can only go so far with the help and well for the, of the business. Okay, any further discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed?
No, no.
Two, three, two. Is it three, two?
Yep. Motion carried for two.
One, three, two. I like it, I like it.
Okay, so...
I'll prepare a confirming resolution, memorializing decision, or your consideration of future use.
Do you need a recall, a, a roll call vote on that, or you know what?
No, I think we, we got it, we got it, sorry.
So do you want to let...
Director, go to your first, uh, no.
Should this?
So it's for monthly hydrojetting?
Yes, one a month. And then if we can get a report from EDC, how long after each month of some...
Absolutely.
Okay, uh, are we finished? Thank you very much for your input, attendance, and...